Town of Maryville Town Council meeting is called to order at 6:30 PM. Invitation by Captain Becky Simmons from the Salvation Army.
She's not here.
Not here? Everyone, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah, we had to record her.
Let's bow our heads. Dear Lord, we asked us, we ask you to please bless this council and our town. Please keep us safe in all walks of our life. Please remember, please call us to remember what our duties are to our public that we serve. In God's name, we thank you. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's power there.
It was right there.
It's alright. It's okay, it's a big deal. Don't worry about Craig. Okay, good to go.
Alright, now we're, now we're all official. Roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Spann?
Here.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Garalcheck?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Pettit? Whiting?
Here.
Miano?
Here. We have six members present. Petitions, Communications, and Remonstrations. Proclamation of the Town of Maryville. State of Indiana, National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October. Whereas, October 2013 is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And, whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer among women, except for non-melanoma skin cancers. Whereas, breast cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer death in women exceeded only by lung cancer. Whereas, the chance of developing invasive breast cancer at some time in a woman's life is about 1 in 7. Whereas, death rates from breast cancer have been declining, and this change is believed to be the result of earlier detection and improved treatment. And, whereas mammography and x-ray of the breasts is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast cancer that may be cancer long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. Now therefore, the Maryville Town Council hereby proclaims October 2013 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the Town of Maryville.
Motion, second.
A motion from Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Hardaway. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6 to 0. The consent agenda accounts payable, registered voucher approval September 24, 2013, and approval of Town Council meeting minutes of September 10, 2013.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Garalcheck. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6 to 0. Let it show that Councilman Pettit is now here at 6:35.
Senator Ethan Nevin, Madam President.
That's right. Thank you for showing up. Standing committees, Budget and Finance, Councilman Garalcheck.
Yes, we have a waiver of the vacation fees for the Lake County Parks Department. This is for the property that's off of 57th Avenue and I think, what is that, Wade Street?
Chase.
Chase. That we're gonna waive the fees for them for the vacation of the easement there. So that's my motion.
Second.
Very good. Motion by Councilman Garalcheck, seconded by Councilman Hardaway. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
And Miano?
Yes, motion approved, 7 to 0. Anything else on the budget, finance?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to announce that we have some extra money that was left over from the insurance fund. We put some money aside to pay the claims. It was approximately about $80,000. We did not use that money. So at this time, I would like to make a motion that we give our full-time employees that were employed with us at January 1st of 2013, and our part-time employees that were employed with us from January 1st of 2013, full-time employees would receive a check for $500, and then our part-time employees would receive a check for $250. That's my motion.
Second.
Very good. Motion by Councilman Garalcheck to give a stipend to our full-time and our part-time employees, seconded by Councilman Spann. I wish to add, though, that no elected officials will not receive the stipend. And I think it's an excellent idea because as we look around, we see the cost of gasoline going up. Milk is almost $4 a gallon. Our employees have not had any raises or a cost of living. And thank you, Councilman Garalcheck.
Madam President, on a side note, for the record, those of us that have been around a while, including Rich and Ron and I, also have not had a raise on the council since we took office in 2003.
I understand.
So, and we're not here to do that.
No, we're not.
We're here to serve the public, so other communities are doing that, we're not doing that.
Yeah, my vote would always be no on the council getting a raise, any elected official getting a raise.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Hardaway.
I didn't get in there for the money.
You're right. I have a question for our attorney. Seeing we have, we have four councilmen with family members, how will this affect the vote?
Yes.
We could still carry on and take a vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, very good, very good. Okay, roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
I just got a question before we go into it. This, we're still gonna pursue giving employees raises next year.
Hopefully, yes.
I mean, I don't want that to be put on the back burner because we're doing this. I'd like to think that we would continue to pursue finding money somewhere so that we can give them something on top of the $500.
Keep in mind, ladies and gentlemen, that the option income tax money, 25% has to go to public safety, either fire or police, and that can be in the form of salary and raises for those officers and new firefighters. So that's gonna have to be dedicated. So to say we're gonna look for it, in a way, guys, it's already there. I mean, it's just how much do we, how much can we give them?
How much are we getting?
How much are we getting?
We don't even know that, do we?
You said that at the workshop, Gene, how much, how much are we getting?
Yeah.
Let me ask you this question. If we don't have to look for it, if we gotta look for it, does that mean it's lost, or if we don't have to look for it, it's not lost?
We don't know what the amount is. I mean, the, you know, that's the only factor.
I just wanna keep that on the front burner, that we still wanna continue pursuing raises for not only the police and fire, but also for the other employees that have, that we've omitted for so many years. I think that that's important, that we give them something. And I'm in full agreement that we give the police department at fire something, but I'm also in full agreement that we should give all employees, with the exception of elected officials, something.
Very good. Okay, roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Barron?
Aye.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Aye.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, 7 to 0. Anything else on the budget and finance?
You know, we talk about giving the employees raises. I just wanna stress that we might have to take that money and put it towards dispatching. So, I mean, it's nothing that's promised yet. So I would like to see that we revisit it, maybe six months into the year, and see where we're at as far as giving raises.
Well, the other, the other option to that, Tom, is as a part of the EMS contract. When we privatized, a portion of that money that prompt pays back to us goes to a dispatcher, doesn't it, Chief?
No, it doesn't.
It does not?
It's supposed to, due to budget restraints, I haven't got any money back in quite a few years.
Okay. Well, that may be another option to look at, as we, you know, depending on when the contract is up, Rich, I don't know when that contract with prompt is up.
That thing, I think that's coming up the first of the year. So that's something that we need to look at, too.
We need to revisit with prompt.
We revisit that as well. I mean, there's a couple things to look into.
Exactly.
That's all I have on the budget and finance.
Okay, thank you. Public Works, Councilman Pettit.
Unless Mr. Spires has something, I don't really have anything, Bruce. Do you have anything?
No, I have nothing to do, to report for tonight.
I just wanna say thank you, Bruce, for all your efforts in getting those, that CN Railroad track started today in Madison.
Thank you.
I know without you, you were definitely the engineer behind everything.
Oh, I do have one thing, Madam President, and I don't know if Mr. Spann notices or not. Bruce, did we get notified by Nippsco that 57th was gonna be closed?
Um...
West of Taft? I mean, it's tree cutting, but I drove to work this morning, all of a sudden, there's detour routes up there north of Wright Manor, and get to the light at 57th, and nobody can turn, you know, can turn left.
I was aware they were gonna do the work, but they never came back and told me what day.
Okay.
They had called about detours, and I explained to them that we're gonna have to set up their own detours and get their own signs, but no, I didn't know it was gonna be tight.
And then thanks, State Department, for cleaning up Broadway, those islands.
Okay. They finally got out there?
They finally got out there. They didn't paint them, but at least they can, they cleaned them up.
Okay.
That's important. Thank you.
Anything else on the Public Works? Council Affairs? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank Bruce for that work on 63rd and 65th, the lanes.
Okay.
Very good job. And we almost had a serious accident on one street, and we got some new people, they don't know how to...
Yeah, now they got their arrows, and they know where to turn.
Yeah, now they got their arrows, but they'll be alright.
Not a problem.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Council Affairs, Councilman Spann?
Nothing at this time.
Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Councilman Garalcheck?
Yes, I reached out to the insurance company, but they haven't gotten back to me when we're gonna sit down and start talking about the renewal. So I will let you know when we're gonna be calling a meeting on that.
Okay.
That's all I have in my report.
Very good, thank you. Public Safety, Councilman Whiting?
No report tonight.
I have a report from Chief Petrush regarding our monthly activity report for the month of August. They had 258 case reports. They completed 55,197 miles, and their calls for service was 1,874. Again, homicides, zero, rapes, zero. And again, on behalf of the Town of Maryville, we thank you, Chief, and your men and ladies. Parks and Recreation, Councilman Spann?
No report.
No report?
Madam?
Council President, Miano. At this time, we need to open the public hearing for the disposal of the properties that we have, that we're gonna auction off, with the exception of, we're gonna take out a few properties that we discussed at the workshop, the Plotted Subdivision, which is in the Lincoln Gardens area, the Devonshire Park property, and Steffick Park property is the three that'll be omitted from the auction at this time.
Very good.
Okay. Madam Chairman, if I may, I'm gonna go ahead and read, we had already issued this notice, and I'll go ahead and read it into the record. Notice hereby given that the Maryville Town Council will conduct a public hearing on September 24, 2013, at 6:30 PM at the Maryville Municipal Complex 780, 7820, excuse me, Broadway, Maryville, Indiana, to approve disposal of certain vacant parcels of surplus land owned by the Town of Maryville and composed primarily of park properties. This also listed 34 vacant land parcels, and which have already been, again, noticed to the public, and at this time, with, there just needs to be held a public hearing for remonstrations, what have you, and then go from there.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I have a question. Do I need to make a motion that we remove those properties or, in the public hearing, or?
After the public hearing.
After the public hearing, okay.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call the public hearing regarding the disposal of certain vacant parcels within our park area. Do we have any questions or any comments? Any public comments? Any public comments or any questions? Seeing none. We have 34 vacant land parcels that have been identified for disposal, including the Williamsburg Land located at approximately 100 West 86th Avenue, Hendricks Park located at 3694 West 80th Lane, Barclay Village located at 61st Avenue and Polk Street, 26 Plotted Subdivision lots located at the 3300 Block of Jennings Court, the 3400 Block of West 76th Court, the 7600 Block of Jennings Court, the 7600 Block of Jennings Street, the 3300 Block of West 76th Circle, and the 3300 Block of West 76th Lane, Jennings and Wilson Park located at 7447 Hendricks Street, Jennings and Wilson Baseball Diamond located at 7460 Wilson Place, Devonshire Park located at 910 with 66th Avenue, and I do believe it was a part of Steffick's Park located at 815 with 70th Place. The value of each of parcels has been appraised by two independent appraisers. The Town of Maryville may sell the parcels for less than 90% of the average of the two appraised values only after publishing a separate legal notice of its intention to do so. The Town of Maryville intends to engage a licensed auctioneer to advertise the sale and conduct the public auction of these parcels. Any further comment or questions? Okay.
Close the public hearing, or make a motion that we take those out? Okay.
At this time, the public hearing is now closed. Councilman Garalcheck?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we take the Plotted Subdivision out, which is in the Lincoln Gardens area, the Devonshire Park, and Steffick Park at this time.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Garalcheck, seconded by Councilman Hardaway to take the property out of the Lincoln Gardens of Devonshire and Steffick Park. Any more questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call. Mr. Guernsey?
Yes. Hardaway?
Yeah.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Barron?
Aye.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Aye.
Miano?
Yes, motion is approved, 7 to 0. Moving on, Environmental Affairs, Councilman Garalcheck.
I don't have anything to report. Matt, do you have anything?
Just a couple things. We just sent out a press release inviting the public to review inundation maps and provide public input as a part of our Stormwater Master Plan. The plan will be completed this spring and will identify and rank stormwater projects within various drainage areas throughout the town. Just recently, the Little Calumet River Basin Commission had released their comprehensive watershed management plan. This plan, we're a part of this, and when our master plan is done, we're gonna submit our projects as an addition to this plan. But what they're doing is they're looking to cost share on projects, on upland storage projects, as I mentioned before. So they've got an application process, they review them every month, so you can submit something every month if you want, and then they can rank them, and then decide as a board which projects they wanna fund. So there's a big pot of money here, and it's perpetual funding. So over the years, this is how I envision us partnering with the Little Calumet River Basin Commission to get our projects done and funded, partially by them. So it helps us, it helps them, so that partnership is very important. Boyd Construction's almost done lowering the AT&amp;T lines for Taft Street. So originally, AT&amp;T said it'd take about 18 months, it's been about three weeks. So they moved very quickly, very happy about that. So when they're done, we'll remobilize and install our box culvert, and then we've got some quantities for, to replace and resurface Taft Place. I spoke at the Enapsen Conference last week, two sessions, everything was very well received. FEMA was there and had some very positive comments about the Maryville Stormwater Program, so I was very, very happy to hear that. We're looking to do some clearing and snagging work this fall along what I'm calling Madison Ditch. We're looking at a segment from 73rd to 67th Avenue, so I'm getting some quantities for that, to do that work. We have easements in select areas there, so we're gonna have to talk to property owners and get in there, and get permissions to get in there, because it's their property, and there are no drainage easements for some of those sections. The jetbacks and barn are discovering a lot of unusual things within the stormwater infrastructure, so they're cleaning everything out, which is, which is great, needs to be done for a long time now, and the new stormwater building is, you know, being constructed, and there haven't been any interruptions, so that's all I have to report on.
Very good, thank you. Anything else on Environmental Affairs?
I got a...
Yes, Councilman Spann?
I mean, I got a calls from Grant Street about flooding, 11 inches in one basement and three, I think, in the other. And at the workshop meeting, Bandil, Mr. Bandil, mentioned there was no flooding on Grant anymore. So I don't think he's aware of, there's still some problems over there.
If there is, as a matter of fact, Friday, I received a call from a gentleman in the 5500 Block of Grant. He was very concerned, he had a foot and a half of water in his basement, so it's still going on.
They're right next to a regulated drain over there, and as the water level rises there, everything else consequently rises with that. We do have some projects identified in our inundation areas for that particular reason. So we're looking at upland storage right in that area. So that's gonna be one of the projects targeted for, as a part of our new master plan. So that's definitely an area that we're focused on, for sure.
Okay, very good, thank you again. Under Elections and Public Relations, Dorinda, this past weekend, you had Rebuilding America?
Rebuilding Together.
Rebuilding Together. There were 11 homes in our town that was taken care of. There were homes of seniors, people with disability, and low income. Dorinda, again, we thank you for your participation and for your caring of this, of our town.
And as a Rebuilding Together Board member, I would like to thank the town for all their assistance in making our project in Maryville successful. The homeowners were very happy, grateful, because now they'll still be able to continue to live in their home and maintain a safe, you know, and maintain their home a little bit longer.
It's my understanding you had 200 volunteers about?
Yes, we had volunteers that were in the trades, which IBEW sent over a lot of their apprenticeship individuals. We had carpenters, we had plumbers, we had roofers, and then we had individuals who were just normal people like myself to go over and help the people.
Very good, and we thank you. And another thing I want to add, our Maryville Senior Services, we will be planning a Polka Fest, not a poker fest, but a Polka Fest, on October 13th, from 12 to 5. It's on a Sunday, it's gonna be right out here in the Town Hall, and we're gonna have food vendors and music, and hopefully, some of our seniors will get out there and do some exercising by dancing on the dance floor that our clique treasure, Gene Guernsey, made. So other than that, that's all I have.
I have one thing, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
The plastic cap program is still in full effect, and I'd like to thank everybody that's contributed so far, and I'd also like to make a statement that this, the plastic caps doesn't enhance just the north end of Maryville, it enhances the entire town.
Definitely.
And I think that that's what we need to communicate, and we don't need to tell people that it only benefits Hardaway's ward, because it benefits every individual in the Town of Maryville.
You know, Councilman, like I always say, and I said this before, and many of us have heard it, we are not seven villages, we are one town. So anything that benefits any ward is a benefit to our town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, under Elections and Public Relations, I'd like to thank Waste Management for stepping up. Dorinda said she needed some dumpsters for this project or whatever. I made a phone call to Waste Management, they stepped up and donated the dumpsters for this project. Also, there's a 5K race that's happening this weekend. I called Waste Management again, they needed some garbage cans, and they actually are donating the porta-potties for this weekend for the 5K race, too.
Very good, thank you so much. They do do wonders for us, for our town, and maybe I'll ask you if I could hit them up for some garbage cans for Polka Fest and maybe a porta-pot.
Sure.
Thank you again. Okay, Economic Development, Councilman Garalcheck?
I have nothing to report.
Utility Liaisons, Councilman Pettit?
No report.
Under Town Government and ADA Compliance, I have no report. Now we're going to move on to the ordinances. I have a first reading for ordinance 13-41. This is a public hearing. A public hearing for an ordinance 13-41, in ordinance of the Town of Maryville, that "For the expenses of Maryville Civil Town for the year ending December 31, 2014, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expense of Maryville Civil Town, the property tax levies and the property tax raised as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form 4-B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage by approval by the Town of Maryville."
So moved, Madam President?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway. Do we have any public comment? As this is a public hearing, do we have any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Barron?
Aye.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Aye.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, 7 to 0. Ordnance 13-42, in ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2013 budget within the fire and hazmat fund, for a decrease in hardware and software of $250, and increase in uniforms for $250.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Barron?
Aye.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved, 7 to 0. Ordnance 13-43, in ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2013 budget within the Police Department General Fund, a decrease of $26,750, an increase of $26,750. No change.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Whiting. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Barron?
Aye.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, 7 to 0. On second ratings, ordinance 13-39, in ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2013 budget within the Maryville Fire Territory Operating Fund budget, for a decrease of $10,000 in longevity, increase of $10,000 over time.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Any discussion?[1790.21] Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call Mr. Guernsey.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yeah.
Gorodcheck.
Yes.
Barrett.
Aye.
Pettit.
Yes.
Whitey.
Aye.
Biano.
Yes, motion approved, seven to zero. Ordnance 13-40, in ordinance of the town of Maryville Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the Police Donation Fund of the town of Maryville Lake County, Indiana, for the year 2013, not included in the current budget for other supplies of $2,000.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Span, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Do I hear any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call Mr. Guernsey.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yeah.
Gorodcheck.
Yes.
Barrett.
Aye.
Pettit.
Yes.
Whitey.
Aye.
Yes. Resolutions, Resolution 13-26, a resolution of the town of Maryville Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2013 budget within the General Fund for a decrease of health and life and AD&amp;D of $65,000 and increase of ITGIS specialists, $65,000 for a total of $65,000. Any motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven to zero. Onto BZA actions. Janice Brown, do we have a Janice Brown?
Here.
Please come up and, up to the mic, please. Hi, how are you? Petitioner Janice Brown, owner Santiago Vega, requests special exception approval. Purpose for a restaurant to be known as Rap City in Mills Dynan, the location 5524 Broadway, zoning C-2, community commercial, case number Z33E10-0813. Is this for this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Span. Roll call. Mr. Guernsey.
Okay. Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yeah.
Gorodcheck.
Yes.
Barrett.
Aye.
Pettit.
Yes.
Whitey.
Aye.
Biano.
Yes, motion approved, seven to zero. Good luck on your business.
Thank you very much.
And I'm sure you're gonna see us all there.
Thank you.
Okay, dear, thank you. Our next one is petitioner 61st Avenue Storage. It's my understanding that the petitioner canceled their request?
They have requested a withdrawal. I have not received anything in writing, but I have been in contact with the petitioner and they've been just extremely busy. So, she will get something in writing so I can place it in the file, but a verbal withdrawal on September 17th occurred.
Okay, very good.
Motion to approve the withdrawal.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Gorodcheck to, to approve the withdrawal scheduled probably for September, into September sometimes, to withdraw?
I'm sorry.
To withdraw?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
I also have one other item.
We need a vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. Roll call Mr. Guernsey.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yeah.
Gorodcheck.
Yes.
Barrett.
Aye.
Pettit.
Yes.
Whitey.
Yes.
Yes, motion approved, seven to zero.
Okay. On the September, I'm sorry, on the August 23rd meeting, we had tableed Sacred Heart and that has not been placed on the agenda. However, tonight is the last night. It can be discussed and voted on. The 90 days.
When did it get approved?
It got approved.
Are the petitioners for Sacred Heart here?
7/24/13.
Please step up.
For the adult daycare.
Last time we all met, there was some question regarding getting approval from the state fire marshal.
Yes.
How did we come on that? How did everything go?
Okay, here's a copy. Um, the fire marshal, it was approved, but the town council tabled it by the way. We are ready. Sacred Heart. It was approved June 26th.
I see you have a application for the, for the variance. And just let me refresh everyone's memory here, please. This was a letter from Phil Topar dated August 26, 2013. He conducted a fire inspection located at 1443 East 84th Place for the proposed location of an adult daycare institutional occupancy. Under his inspection, he has determined that prior to opening as such, the building will be required to be sprinkled as well as to have a manual fire alarm system per the Indiana Fire Code. The building currently has neither system. One is an alarm. It's a manual fire alarm system shall be installed in group one institutional occupancies and a sprinkler group one and automatic sprinkler system shall be provided throughout buildings with group one institutional fire area. Upon speaking with the proposed owner, she stated that her architect is working to apply for variance to the Indiana State Fire Marshal's office to ask for permission to not have a sprinkler system. I informed her that it would be best to wait for an answer from the state before deciding whether to move into this, into this location. I informed her that she will not be able to open until an answer has been provided from the state. As it stands, the building is not sprinkled and does not have a fire alarm system. Occupying the building which is not equipped with the required systems would be a violation of the Indiana Fire Code. I recommend receiving an answer from the state first regarding her variance application for this location before proceeding or making their approved contingent on state review. Signed, Phil Topar, Fire Inspector from the Maryville Fire Department. I have here an application for variance. Did you receive any information or any licensing or anything from the state?
No, we're still waiting on an answer for, on the state.
Do you have any idea when it might be?
Um, he did tell us what.
He said it'll be between six weeks before we hear anything back.
When did you file?
The 23rd.
23rd of July?
No.
The 23rd of September?
23rd of September, yes.
Wait a second. This being in my ward, I guess I'm gonna stand up on my soapbox a little bit, guys. I'm a little concerned, ladies, that, you know, you went to the BZA.
But this is already in.
Hang on a second. You went to the BZA, our fire inspector that we pay to inspect the buildings, make sure they're safe in the town of Maryville, told you about this report. You were in front of this council on the 24th of July.
27th.
27th of July. And two months later, you still haven't gone downstate. You just went downstate four days yesterday. I have a real problem with that. And I'll tell you why I have a problem with that, folks. When I was in Bruce's spot as town manager, we had a storm in the middle of winter across from the hospital at the Broadfield Town Homes where the fire departments were putting in backup generators for MS patients because the doctor didn't think she needed to notify the police or the fire department. And we were taking people out. And Dorinda remembers this, she was around and so was Ron. Well, I'm not gonna, I don't wanna run into another situation like that where this building isn't safe by fire code or building code and we allow someone to occupy it. I'm, I'm sorry. I mean, and, and now that I find out that just yesterday you went downstate to file for your, your things.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Castleton, I, I need advice. It's been 90 days and I don't, especially with adult daycare. I mean, the clientele that they're gonna have, that building has got to be absolutely positively up to code.
Are we at the end of their time?
90 days tonight, Rich. I kept Dorinda, it was the 26th. So, you had four days in June, 31, 31, and 24. So, today's the last day we can act on it. But there's no recommendation from the BZA. So, by state law, we gotta do something with this tonight. Or can we give them another?
I guess, can we extend it?
I don't know.
Six weeks or can they come back in six weeks and absolute drop dead? And if they don't have something in six weeks, then we can deny it.
I mean, the statute says 90 days of BZA's action takes place. Am I correct, Mr. Castleton?
That's correct.
So, and with no recommendation, I, I don't know what to do.
Well, and. I'm reading, um, the report. Question eight. Our proposed plan of action, here is noted on Proposed Rental Space Plan Four. If you look at Plan Four, which actually gives you a printout of everything and what we plan to do, outswing exterior doors will be added in our client and office rooms that presently do not have one. A manual fire alarm system and direct wire smoke detectors will be added in each room. The 2012 edition of Eternal Building Code, which is P.206F, which is section code 9032.6, group one includes an exemption where an automatic sprinkler system is not required in a daycare facility where the space is at level of exit discharge in every room where care is provided, at least an exit door will be provided. And if you would go to our layout, which is the, attachment three, which is a outlay of the whole entire suite and where our, the exit doors are.
That'll be an egress to every, every room of care.
Correct. In offices.
Again, I guess it begs the question, ladies, I, I don't mean to belabor the point, but we brought this to the council floor on July 27th.
Well, we.
And you're just filing this report yesterday downstate. And now you've put this council in a very uncomfortable position. I'm sorry.
We gave him the information.
We left here. We gave.
He said that it was gonna be very tight in trying to put all of this together. So, when we left here that day, we did everything we were supposed to do. So, he's just getting the report back to us and sending it off.
Who just, who just gave you the report?
It's signed by Roger.
It's the H2W architect. And the person that submitted is Roger Rogers.
I believe is how he pronounces it. I don't know. I mean.
And that is your architect? That's the one that's?
Yes. He's the one that did the report.
When was Phil's original? Madam President, when was Phil's original report?
It's on the last sheet of the pack. Yes, sir.
On the 26th. Well, we, when we came back, we were trying to, because we thought we could be grandfathered in. So, we were trying to fight the case where we would not have to put the fire sprinkler system in place.
Or apply for the variance.
Which even in the report, we're going off of the, the actual.
Report from the fire inspector.
Where we're under 2012 where it says that it's exempt. We, it doesn't require a sprinkler system. The fire system.
Correct. Dorinda. I don't know why, yeah, I, I don't know why. Again, I go back to the chronological order of what's going on. More importantly, the people that you're gonna be serving that are gonna be in the building, it needs to be top notch. And if I have to vote against it as ward councilman, I'll vote against it to ensure the safety of those residents that are gonna be in that building. I'm sorry. You know, we, we run into this problem all the time, guys, where we're allowing projects at the Plan Commission or at this council to come into this town and either they don't fulfill them, which is numerous PUDs we've got, Dorinda, correct, because of finances this or that, or, I hate to use the word, but people are trying to do it on the cheap and get through and get opened. And I don't know that that's what we necessarily wanna do in this town, guys.
That's not the case.
Can we delay it for six weeks or no?
I don't, that's up to Rich. I mean, the state statute's the statute.
I mean, if we can't, then.
You know, they give you 90 days, you know, from the BZA.
If we can't, we gotta do what we gotta do. I mean, because I, I'm in agreement that we can't circumvent the system.
I'm also a little concerned, guys, quite frankly, seeing that Phil's letter is dated August 16th, 26th. And this was heard at the BZA. That, that fire report should've been done during the BZA petition process. So, that we don't have to sit here on the last day and make this decision and have this discussion. Sorry. I mean, that's.
Dorinda.
They could've been working on this paper, that Roger gentleman could've been working on this paperwork back in June before it even got to us, if they would've known.
I apologize that I don't have what we're looking for here, but if.
I'm sorry, they were aware that there was the sprinkler issue. We have had another adult daycare that the fire inspector was requiring them to install a sprinkler system. They could not fulfill it. And so, that organization backed out. They're saying that they fall underneath some other code. I don't know. I'm only going by the recommendation of the fire inspector. When this was brought up at the August meeting, that was a 60-day limit at that point. And they knew that they had an additional 30 days to get all their paperwork in order. And possibly, if the architect would've called downstate and talked to a supervisor, maybe they could've rushed this through a little bit quicker, but.
Mr. Castleton, I have a, a motion in my head and, and I'll run through it and I'm not expecting a second. I make a motion and we deny this with the understanding that they will be allowed to refile once they have a completed state fire plan that's been approved and we will waive the BZA filing fees at the next available BZA meeting.
I can tell you that the state code states that if a petition is denied, that they have to wait a year before they can refile.
It does.
It does state that, yes.
Well, then I withdraw that motion. That's why I was in my, how do we get, like Rich said, how do we get around this state statute under the 90 days? I mean, if no recommendation and we let this thing ride, then there's.
No recommendation from the BZA.
Yeah, it goes to this case number and there's nothing been approved. Rich, what do you, what do you got? Keep trying to say something.
Can we defer this for 48 hours, whatever, till you give us a?
I think the 90 day is today. I think the 90 day limit is today.
You think, well, then.
Based on the calculation.
I've done all I can do.
The default, for example, if, prior to the statute requiring the 90-day automatic implementation of the BZA recommendation, the default is if there's no recommendation given, it would've been basically by default denied. Is that correct? If you don't take any action, it will automatically be denied. And then, of course, you have the other statutes that are gonna require that you apply in a year. Obviously, it's problematic. From the council's perspective, if you wanna approve, you obviously have that right. But at this stage, if you don't, the statute's gonna apply and you're gonna have to be, you're gonna have to wait another year.
Okay, if we, if we agreed not to do anything that you put on the record, that we will not operate until we get everything in place, could we do that? Where we don't go in, we don't open up until we actually have everything done? Would that be an option? Where we don't operate until everything is in place? So, you guys are satisfied with what we have? Could we do that? So.
Well, as it stands now, your Sacred Heart Daycare for Adults has really not come forward and you folks were very negligent on your part, as with your architect, on not moving not moving forward. This looks to me, and I'm just speaking for myself, it looks like we are getting into a business that is just putting everything on the back burner and hoping the town council approves and says, oh, you sure, come on in, move on, and I for one will vote no on this, because an elderly person, as you know, you're in the business, they don't move too fast. And I hate to think of having, these people will be Maryville residents, and I hate thinking that something would happen to them, and like I says, this was filed yesterday, to me, that seems, if somebody else was doing this, and I'm not having, you know, shedding a light on, on you ladies, this looks like negligence to me. Negligence in your wanting to open up a business. It does not gonna lay on the fault of this town council, just a minute, he has to change tape.
Go ahead.
Okay. We don't want this to look like we are the bad guy sitting up here. We are not the bad guys, we welcome business, we welcome good businesses, we welcome businesses when it comes to either, uh, daycare of seniors, daycare of children, daycares to take care of our residents. This to me looks like nothing was done, just nobody cared to do it except the final last day. And I'm sorry, at this point, I too would vote no on this. You're asking if, if we could extend it for, for ninety days? I think we should, uh, keep in adherence with any other companies or businesses or institutions that came before this town council, either this year, last year, or how many years before, to say, why would we grant exception to someone who did not do their paperwork on time?
Rich, I have another question, Dorinda and I were conferring. Um, if they voluntarily withdraw this and go with my idea of when they're ready, come back and refile, and we'll waive the fee, would the, we don't vote them down, so they don't have to wait a year, if they voluntarily withdraw this and refile in two months or three months, and we waive the filing fee, provided they have an accurate and up-to-date fire protection, uh, plan for the building, would that be within the boundaries?
Um, and you're gonna have to apologize, I had no idea this was coming up and...
Yeah, I didn't either.
...the statute at all.
I didn't.
Um, is that generally the policy, if you voluntarily withdraw, you can file?
You can refile.
And I, I mean, based on your experience, I'm sure that's correct, I have no problem with that. I mean, obviously, we can double-check and make sure the statute allows that, but it seems at this point at least, if you were to, if you really wanna file within the next couple of months, that seems at least, at the very least, the best option that you have. We'll do the research, make sure that's correct, but if nothing else, at least that will give us an opportunity to look to see if we can avoid that one-year delay.
And I wouldn't even make, I mean, typically, Dorinda, you go the fifteenth of the month before you wanna be heard, so you've already missed the September fifteenth to be on October. If they get the report, let them file for, for the October BZA and waive it if they're willing to withdraw it. And, and do it right, and, and make sure that it's, the, you know, again, I don't know why you wouldn't wanna have a fully functional required sprinkling system in the building, but, um, you know, that's, uh, I don't know, I guess those are our, basically, those are our options, lady, either I'm gonna make, ladies, I'm gonna make a motion to deny this unless you wanna withdraw it and come back once you have the plan.
Okay, we can do that, that's fine.
Can I add one little thing? Uh, the fire system, the sprinkler system is important when you have, uh, individuals, kids, adults, old elderly people, it's, it's part of, uh, any, any type of forum such as this town hall, there's a sprinkler system right in there. Uh, this is two thousand thirteen, I, I don't think any, any organization should be, uh, having bodies of people, and there's no sprinkler system in that building. I don't think any town council would approve it without a sprinkler system, minimum, minimum.
Unless, of course, the state allows them the variance, and then we'll just have to go by what the state allows them.
Yeah, if the state says it, okay. Okay, we need to hear it from your, we need to hear it from your mouth.
And we need names and addresses.
You have to say it.
Okay, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
We would like to withdraw, um, um...
Petition for sincere heart.
And I need your name.
Uh, Nolise.
Oh, go ahead.
Nolise Nash.
And then you write.
You need the addresses for the record, is that what you're saying, Dorinda? We're gonna need your addresses for the record.
Okay, the address is one four four three East Eighty-third.
No, we need your addresses, your home addresses.
Oh, the home address? Um, one seven two zero zero West Ten Mile Road, that is in, um, Southfield, zip is four eight zero seven five.
And mine is, um, seven three three eight, um, a Creekview, West Bloomfield, Michigan.
Okay.
Motion to accept the withdrawal, Madam President.
Second.
Very good, roll call Mr. Guernsey to withdraw.
Soon as you receive information back from the state, come back, talk to me, and then we'll get your petition refiled.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Garcheck?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whitey?
Yes.
Biano?
Yes, motion carries, seven to zero. Going onto old business, do we have any old business? Seeing no old business, any new business?
New business.
Yes, sir.
I have something. Tomorrow, we'll be opening the bids for the, uh, fire trucks for the fire territory. Also, I don't know if everybody received in their, in their package about the open house for the Maryville Fire Station Seventy-One. Open house will be October ninth of two thousand and thirteen, from five-thirty to nine-thirty PM. Tours of the recently remodeled fire station will be given. The Edith House will be there for, uh, demonstration, and the fire department will also be performing an auto explication demonstration, there would be food and soft drinks will be provided. The address is eighteen West Seventy-third Avenue here in Maryville. That's all I have on new business.
Thank you, do we have any public comments? Any public comments? Yes, sir. Yes, please step up and state your name and your address.